Good evening, everyone. I'll follow Brandon's select board to order for July 12th at 7:00. Is there a motion regarding the agenda as it was posted?
Make a motion to approve. I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Are there any changes to be made? I have one. 7C, like to ask for an executive session under 1VSA 313A1, and this will be regarding collective bargaining negotiations with the New England Police Benevolent Association, the unit. And we'll do the appropriate two motions to enter executive sessions at the time. Anything else to add or change? All in favor of the agenda as we just amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Item 2, approval of the select board minutes from July 6th, the special meeting.
Make a motion to approve those.
Motion and a second. Many errors or omissions in the minutes as submitted. I've heard this was a special meeting to set the tax rate for the information of those in attendance and listening tonight. The homestead rate was set at 1.3862. The non-residential rate was set at 1.6356. No? Sorry. That was the calculation. And then there's the adjustment. So the total tax rate was set at 2.3585, and the non-residential rate at 2.6079. That sounded more like what I was expecting to see. 2.3585 and 2.6079 for non-residential. Thank you. All in favor of approval? Are we also approving the minutes in the last select board? No.
Okay, that motion that was made was for July 6th. Okay, then I should abstain on that for a little bit here. I should accept the motion.
All right, Mr. Wyman withdraws the second. Do you want to offer a second? Mr. Giles offers a second. So we have a motion for Mr. Coolidge, a second for Mr. Giles, no. This is July 6th, only special meeting. All in favor of approval of the minutes of the special meeting which set the tax rate, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any extensions?
Aye.
Mr. Wyman stays. Okay, perfect. Item 3, the town manager's report. Mr. Atherton.
We've been notified that we're receiving the fiscal year '22 municipal grants and aid award of $17,500. This is our annual grant that we apply for to mitigate stormwater runoff and drainage issues in the roadways. We're in the process of renewing the municipal wastewater discharge permit for the wastewater treatment plant. The new permit will be good until June 30th, 2026. Notice has been posted on our town boards for that as well. We've hired two new officers in the police department over the last few months. Aiden Elwick is currently in the academy full-time, will be graduating at the end of August. And Joseph Manino came in onboard as a part-time certified officer and is currently training in the field of lieutenant postal work. We have finally received a grant agreement for the Union Street sidewalk replacement, so we'll be talking more about that and other things on Union Street hopefully soon. I would promise finishing a culvert replacement and ditching on Florence Road and Hypon Road in anticipation of paving, and they plan to start work on Mill Lane later this week.
Thank you, Mr. Atherton. Any questions for the town manager from the board?
Yeah, I have one, little one. As I was walking here today, I came back by the trash can bin. I'm curious, there's two trash cans at each location. Are we thinking at all in the future of going to a recycling and trash pair?
They're supposed to be that way. The ones we had last time that said recycling and trash has both turned into trash, so that's what they're supposed to do.
And so we may have some labels for them?
No, we can't. It's not doing any good, Tim, but we'll label them. I mean, that's where our last ones were when we had the green ones out, and they were labeled. They were just called trash receptacles, so.
Yeah, I appreciate the frustration I just told you. It'd be great to make another record. The other question I had to do with, it seems like next meeting, we're going to be talking about the COVID money, the ARPA. And I was wondering if we might be able to get some summary of what you wanted to do with the money for water in a tentative? I guess what I'm asking for is a form that we can kind of look at to weigh pros and cons against. And if you can flush it out at all, if you excuse the pun, to help us weigh things. I was thinking of doing something similar with the Wi-Fi before next meeting. Just trying to push a few numbers and backs around so when we're looking at things, we can kind of be looking at ideas.
Yeah, I'm sure I could get an engineer's cost estimate and scope before the next meeting.
Oh, that would be very cool. Yeah, thank you.
Other questions or comments to the town manager of the board? How about members of the public tonight? Anybody in the room or on Zoom? Anything to ask the town manager? Mike Frankways.
Yes, can we get a new road sign at the intersection of Tom Farm Road? I haven't been there in quite a while. Or could you put one underneath the yellow sign indicating intersection ahead?
We've put new road signs out multiple times, so.
I know, and they keep disappearing.
Yep, and stop signs and all other signs. Bronco lane disappeared last week.
But they got that one yellow sign that said, indicating the intersection ahead. Sometimes they had the road sign underneath that.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it. Have the guys figure it out.
I got a lady come down, she was lost. She went all the way up down to the, we're turning into dirt road. She said, Mike didn't say anything about a dirt road.
Yeah, well, we can put another sign back up there.
Thank you.
Yes, Mike Miller.
It may have already been discussed, but since the trash was brought up, could we get trash receptacles at the gazebo at the waterfall? Since there's picnic tables there, people are always leaving their stuff on the tables. It'd be nice to have.
In Green Park?
Kennedy Park.
Kennedy Park.
At the Falls here, where Red Clover has their events, which White Park's better.
Possible trash in Green Park, possible. Thank you. Doug Miller.
I've been out of town for a few weeks, but I came back and read the great articles on Route 7, or Segment 6 being finished. I had asked prior meetings regarding the speed signs that we were going to have coming into town and out of town with the radar. Just wondering what the status of those signs are since Segment 6 is now done and when those might happen to go up.
As soon as we get the breakaway poles from the manufacturer, everything's backhoarded, so that's all we're waiting for. We'll be trans- set it, set it on the ground for us, so I think we're ready to go as soon as the poles show up.
The question for the.
I have a follow-up. Usually Dave's mentioned something about rec. department, and he did this time. So would it be appropriate time to ask a rec. question?
Well, the rec. director is there.
I know him, I see him. It's really not a question. I wanted to state publicly that I thought the 4th of July was one of the best we've ever had, and that Bill Moore did an amazing job having everything downtown. And after four years of construction and everything we've done, it was great to have everything downtown, the fireworks downtown, the people downtown, even though I didn't attend the block dance, I drove by and saw hundreds and hundreds of people out there. And I think Bill needs to be recognized for all that he did to put that on.
Thank you, Bill, and your committee.
But it really, like, I know I'm seen a lot, but really that was a huge community effort, committee effort. I mean, I'd be remiss without, you know, I know you get shots in the paper, but Susan, Sue, Bobby, Debbie, and Gene, Ben Womack, you know, we did a lot of meeting. And again, the stuff that happens behind the scenes, whether it's Brandon PD waking up at 4:35 in the morning and putting all the signs using codes keeping us safe, or the Braden Fire Department getting in the water to catch our ducks so they don't go where the falls. I mean, there's a lot of people that make this happen. So this is a community effort, community effort. I mean, it reflects on the ring, we're awesome, and so we have an awesome break.
Thank you, Bill. Other questions for the town manager tonight? Are the folks on Zoom able to hear okay? Thumbs up or thumbs down? Can't hear very well? Thumbs down from the folks on Zoom. We'll have to work on that in the future. Move it, you can't move it.
No, no, you're.
Move my little sign.
Yeah, move it behind the mic.
That's right. Thank you, Butch. Thanks for being here. So, public comment and participation. There's always public comment available on any agenda item, but this is the time for items you don't see on the agenda. Any items you don't see on the agenda that you'd like to bring before the board tonight?
Mr. Chair, I actually have a couple of things I'd like to.
You're not off.
Discuss. Or not discuss, just make aware of. So we did have our Segment 6 walkthrough there a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago. And a couple of things I noticed in town that I was a little disgusted on. And one was that there was a tree up on the north end of town, just north of Brandon Lumber, that someone decided they didn't like, and they cut it, one of our Brandon trees. So just to let folks know, it's actually against a lot of, kind of called a tree. And we were kind of bummed that, you know, we were able to move some trees around during the project if folks didn't want some. Would've been nice to have just gave that tree to someone else or move it somewhere instead of someone cutting it. The other thing I just wanted to remind folks of, because it's come up a lot, and we've actually gone and cleaned some of it up, that it is actually against a lot of putting green on road, brass clippings being one of them. We've had a couple places on Park Street where we've gone and cleaned it up just because it's dangerous, and a couple of places on Route 7. But I just wanted the folks to know that that is something that they really shouldn't be doing. It's dangerous for cyclists and motorcycles. So if we get the word out on that, that'd be great.
Thank you. Further public comment? Items on the agenda?
Yeah. I've been asked by a couple different landlords, and I'm surprised they aren't here tonight, what would be the process, or could we even stigmatize? If we got two landlords that already land on there now, could that be, could they take that off, we can fast-forward, how would that work, could it be done?
So, sure, Tracy, they could come, goes like we've done before, where they could petition to declassify or de-commission the road.
Yep.
And they can do that anytime they'd like. If they want to get ahold of me, I can certainly help them out.
So I'm trying to understand, do they want to have it be declassified, to be not a town road?
Yes, they'd like to have it declassified, and I believe they'd like to be able to gate it at the other end because they do get a lot of garbage and trash and stuff over in there. And it's now just two property owners. And like I said, I'm really surprised they weren't here tonight, but I told them I would ask and find out.
Sure. Yeah, I'll get ahold of me, because we've done a hundred fewer spots. We have actually pulled a lot of tires out of that road, but it's crazy, so.
Yeah, that was all I had, that was.
Yeah, I'll get ahold of me, Tracy.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Chair.
I have a question for Tracy and those lenders. Do they have any interest in it being a legal trail or just being private property?
I think they prefer it to be just private property. I mean, that's something that they could be talked about or whatever. I think what their idea is, is that to be able to gate it at the far end. I guess a trail would probably gate it, but I mean, that'd be something that I'm sure they'd be willing to talk about.
Just by way of public comment and participation, I did want to pick up on what Mr. Giles mentioned, which is that the next meeting, we're supposed to be talking in some more depth about the ARPA funds that the town will be able to spend on something for the public good. We had asked in a couple of different ways and places for some public comment, and wanted to just review what's come in. We had public comment regarding putting the money toward a highway barn, toward broadband and Wi-Fi throughout the town, toward an energy revolving loan fund, low-income housing, and paths and greenways. So that was all mentioned at the last select board meeting. We've since had a suggestion to address the sidewalks on Carver Street. We've had a suggestion to remove the traffic lights. We've had another suggestion regarding expanding broadband. Another one about energy efficiency projects for homeowners. And then we had a good list that came through, included affordable housing, a Neshibi River Park. I believe this was below the Lower Falls. An electric police car, new solar panels up at the industrial park, and a Brandon station on the train track, which will now start having passenger service between Rottland and Burlington. Did you catch all those? Thank you. So, so far, to my understanding, that's what's come either to the board at a meeting or to the board by email or phone calls between meetings. And the board is still very interested in hearing what people have to say for a suggestion for using these funds. I think at this point, the funds are something slightly under $400,000 is the number. And I'll leave it at that unless anybody has anything tonight they want to add to that list for the board to consider. We've obviously got to pay attention to all the requirements of spending the money and so forth, and the town manager is right on top of that for sure. So we will make sure that, I'm sure some of these things would be qualified uses, and maybe some of these things might not be qualified uses. So there's some things that we are not able to spend this money on, but many things we might be able to.
I might get appropriate time to chime in and say, thanks, Dave. I looked on the website, and it's great to see Brandon's checkmark there that we're all signed up to get our money. It amazes me that there are some big communities that are not. And so I hope they hit line.
The deadline's this week, July 15th, so I was glad to see Ray did on top of that.
Okay, to move on to the next item. Oh, yes.
Have they released the requirements for the spending?
Yes, and so Dave's been to some training on it, and some of the board members have been to some DLC training on it. And there's some definite kind of parameters that kind of everybody seems to agree on, and there's some kind of areas that they're not sure whether they'll be qualified uses or not. So I think it's still being developed, but there's a baseline.
Could we get the baseline for the discussion next week somehow?
Yeah, I think the BLSG webinar.
You can go to the Cities and Towns website, and have a whole ARPA section. Just a kind of a quick summary. Any project that applies for state clean water or drinking water, like wastewater and water projects qualify. I think there's broadband, but remember, there's a whole other thing with broadband too. Yes, that qualifies, and there is an affordable housing piece in there as well. We can't do like just road paving sidewalks. It can be incorporated in a project that qualifies, but it can't set on its own.
But if I go on the website, it has the.
They've got like three webinars they did.
Yeah, it's nicely developed, and a lot of what they urge is for cooperating with other groups and organizations and scales of funders to try to collaborate so you get the dollar deal as far as possible.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. So, pretty informal, so if you want public comment later on, go back to it. But right now, we'll go on to item 5, which is the BLSG update. I didn't request this. Did BLSG request this?
Yeah, this was brought to me by Mr. Rousenberger.
Excellent. So if I turn over to Ms. Rousenberger, Ms. Russ, our delegates to the BLSG.
Mr. Chair and members of the select board, Richard Russ and I, Wayne Rousenberger, are your Brandon reps to the mosquito district. Quite certain that you have read in the paper that Salisbury voted this year not to fund us, okay? That's a problem. They put a $25,000 hole in our budget. After their vote, which stated, shall the residents of Salisbury fund the BLSG for the $25,000 and change, the answer was no. I think that once that answer was affirmed, then they realized that there is a grant involved. And it's the grant that pays for the larvicide, okay? So the only costs to the towns are hidden costs because liability, we already have to have liability because of the adulticide program. So there's a 25% match, in-kind match. Salisbury has realized, I'm assuming that they don't have their 25% match, and all of a sudden, the question has now become, oh, they were talking about they don't want adulticide anymore. That's not what the question was. The question was, do we fund the BLSG? So my feeling, and I think Rich will agree with me, that Salisbury has an internal problem that they need to resolve. Brandon, the BLSG has two internal problems. One is our bylaws and our agreement to form the district need to be updated, which we are in the process of. We have a meeting tomorrow night. The bylaws will probably be finalized and ready for the board to accept, and the agreement will probably take another meeting after that. So I don't know what's going to happen here. Salisbury wants us to negotiate so that they can have a larvicide-only product, larvicide-only.
Treatment.
Okay. And the BLSG was not set up that way. The BLSG, when it started, was strictly adulticide. The state has come in and said, we will give you money, and it turns out to be $70,000 to do larvicide. Now, there's strict guidelines on what has to be done, but this grant started in 2012. It's been $70,000 ever since. When you read the grant, the grant keeps changing. Oh, the BLSG will do this, they'll do this, they'll do this, but you get no more funding. So what it turns out to be is, we can't do any larvicide. We can't do an aerial treatment. Of course, you have to have a minimum of 1,000 acres, and it costs us $14,000 just for the helicopter. That's without manpower, without the product, without replacing the product. It's a big ticket item. Now, when they set these grants up, they have $140,000 there. Half of it goes to Lemon's Fair, we get the other half. Lemon's Fair has about 1,500 acres to treat. We have about 5,000 to 6,000 acres. So whoever came up with the formula of, well, let's just split it in half, you know, it would be nice if they rethought that. Okay? Now, if you look at the bottom of this tube, that's what they call a raft of mosquitoes, okay? Now, three years ago, we didn't have to collect these rafts, okay? Now, what's there is probably between 80 and 100 mosquito eggs. And we are required now to collect these specimens. They have to go to Cornell University, they have to be alive, and they have to be tested, resistance tested. So far, every time we've sent a raft, there is no resistance. So I don't know what's going to happen with the BLSG. I know that Salisbury feels that they are entitled to the grant money. Evidently, the state has, and I know there's an email, which I haven't really read, that says that they're entitled to 20% of that $70,000. Now, each town in the district is assessed a different amount of money. Brandon pays like 29%, Salisbury pays 18.2%. So how you come up with every town should get 20% is beyond me. The state is also saying, well, they're entitled to this because their name is in the agreement to form the district. Well, right now, Pittsburgh is in the district, and it's not the BLSG P. So I don't know where they came up with this formula. So we're here today to just say, we don't really know what's going to happen. But this is not a good situation. As one of your town reps, I'm not feeling like I want to negotiate. I think, you know, you put a $25,000 hole in my budget, and now you want us to give you a price just larvicide. Well, that money is not guaranteed. It says, write the grant. As soon as you read that grant, this money is not guaranteed, and this grant can stop within 30 days of written notice. If we don't want to do it anymore, we can notify the state and say in 30 days, we don't want this anymore. And they can do the same thing to us. So right now, I feel that the problem is Salisbury. They need to figure out what they're going to do. I think they need a special meeting, a special vote, to vote on whether they want to stay in the district or they want to get out of the district. Because their question on the vote on town meeting day was about funding. It wasn't about anything else. And you can't read between the lines because there's only one line. So I don't know, Rich wants to add anything?
Oh, one of the things he was talking about, $140,000 grant from the Department of Agriculture. Half of it comes to BLSG, the other half to Lemon's Fair. Lemon's Fair does larvicide in home. They don't have need to adulticide. Of course, in the area we covered the last couple of years has been, you know, the adulticide is really up in the air. We have people that want to be sprayed, people that don't want to be sprayed. We try our best, go out, we can't control it. We try to not spray this area. If the neighbor wants to be sprayed, it's on a backpack, which is not nearly as efficient as spraying from a moving vehicle. As far as Salisbury's, I am a little concerned about that too. Maybe not as much as Maine is. But it seems to me like Salisbury is kind of trying to hold the BLSG hostage. They're wanting this, they're cut for larvicide from the state neighbor, but they have no way of aligning it. If they don't have money to fund it, how can they come up with a 25% match for their share of the land? One other thing I'd like to add. I asked around if we need an alternate for the board, for the BLSG. Right now, Dave is up for alternate. He strikes pretty thick. One of the big things with board members and personnel is the adulticide that is being used today is okay by the Department of Agriculture, by the United States Department of Agriculture. And people are just looking to find the reason. And people are just looking to find the reason to, to sue the BLSG. You can't, we can't get help because of that. And if, you know, if somebody goes out and accidentally sprays beyond the state, if someone doesn't want to be sprayed, they don't understand, they cannot as an individual be sued. The BLSG could, and I'm sure you get the same compliance with it. There are some people that are just, every week. Yeah. Would you perhaps?
I'd also like to add that the towns that are in, in the BLSG have to understand that there's no allotment of larvicide in the grant. It's a pool of money that goes to the district. And if one of the towns needs 70% of the product to solve a problem, they're going to get 70%. It's not every town is going to get 20%. So I don't know. Did you say Butch was on Zoom?
Butch is on Zoom, yes.
Can he hear us?
Doesn't sound like Butch is hearing what's on in the meeting room very well. But we could, we could ask Butch if he'd like to chime in.
I would like to ask.
On the topic at all? He's got his microphone muted.
Well, Seth, Seth, unfortunately, I couldn't hear any of the, the conversation from the audience at all. And so I don't, I don't feel comfortable chiming in. However, I would more than happy to have the, Tom Anderson fill me in on the conversation. And then I could chime in on that later, unless you have some specific questions that I may not be able to answer.
So Bush, this was kind of a similar conversation as to what you and I had earlier today. And I had some questions for you about BLSG as well, which is pretty interesting that Wayne pretty much said the same thing. The only, the only thing that has concerned me is the way that the grant works for the BLSG. And I know you and I were talking about that a bit today too. And Wayne was bringing up that there's a 25% in-kind match on the grant. And that they're expecting that Salisbury should be paying a 25% match to be sprayed or to be larvicide. I was under the impression that that's not how that works. That the, the grant that comes from the state is actually for larvicide, but it goes to the BLSG as the municipality and not to the individual towns on a percentage rate.
That's my understanding, Dave. I would, I would have to, I could get clarification of that. But it's my understanding, I, I'm sure you commented that Brandon, whether or not Brandon gets a direct grant from the agency of A for, for Brandon's share of that grant, but I don't believe it does. I believe the grant is granted to the, to, to the municipality of the mosquito district.
That's what I, that's the way I see it.
Right. The 25%, whatever their in-kind is, has nothing to do with the individual municipalities. That's solely on the BLSG.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Wayne, does the BLSG have some legal counsel working with you?
All right. Yeah. When Salisbury voted not to pass, we did seek legal counsel. Of course, our attorney said, we have a good case. Of course, their attorney is also Brandon and Lester's attorney. So they had to get somebody else because of conflict of interest. Now, his take is, nah, you don't really have a take because of the way the agreement turned out. So the thing is, you spend a couple thousand dollars to get an idea of where you stand. But what's the point of trying to sue them for the $25,000? We're going to use it up in legal fees. So I'd rather fight a different battle than to fight trying to get the $25,000. But I don't feel comfortable myself negotiating with Salisbury because I don't trust them. The question on the ballot was about funding. It wasn't about getting out of the district because there's people in Salisbury that are convinced they're not in the BLSG anymore. And, you know, for the state to come in and say 20%, that bothered me. It bothered me a lot. So like I said, I don't know where this is all going to lead to, but it's not a good situation right now. But I think that, I think that Salisbury has to come around and let us know exactly what they're doing because I don't know what they're doing.
I'm glad you highlighted this for the board and the community. And I want to thank you and Wayne and Richard for being the delegates. This is an important board, an important multi-town board. And if you didn't hear Wayne, those folks on Zoom, there's a desire or there's a need for an alternate position to be filled. A Brandon person to serve as an alternate to the BLSG board. And if this is an issue that impacts you or you care about, we would encourage folks to consider serving and stepping up in that way. Anything else to be contributed on this? Thank you for the information. I think it's information at this point and there's not, you're not looking for the board to do anything, which I appreciate.
No.
But the, the board is glad to be informed of what's going on.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's definitely up to the BLSG board. But trying to get through to certain people that, you know, my thought, trying to get through to you, you're not thinking the same way I'm thinking, so makes it difficult. So where it's all going to lead, to them.
One, one other concern of mine personally is if Salisbury does this to BLSG. Our attorney's advice was, you don't want to go to court. Negotiate with them. Well, fine with them. Do we negotiate with Brandon on Brandon's share? Do we negotiate with Pittsburgh? Lester?
Yeah, either you're ready or you're out. I'm not going to take a year off. Because which does stop Brandon from doing it next year? Say, ah, we're not going to pay it. Can't run it this way.
May I ask a question?
Right.
So if, if Salisbury were to come up with their 25% match next year, which is $17,500, and vote to approve that spending on the larvicide, would that satisfy the BLSG?
Well, it wouldn't satisfy me.
That would be like the folks of Salisbury saying, I don't want adulticide sprayed on my yard, my yard, my yard, my yard, my yard, my yard. Period. The whole community saying, I don't want it sprayed on my yard, which is their right as a community to do so. So if they want the adulticide and are willing to pay the 25% match required for the grant, that's.
That, that's the larvicide.
The larvicide, I mean. But the, and the adulticide, you said, is the liability issue for the insurance and all of that. So they're both a liability. I mean, we have people in Salisbury that think that larvicide is no good either.
They're in the minority, but there are people that feel that way. And you have to remember that the grant is not guaranteed money. That's one of the things that's right at the beginning of the grant. This is not guaranteed. So I don't feel comfortable going into negotiations to say, oh, well, we're going to do larvicide in Salisbury. Well, we don't even know if we're going to get the money. So, no.
If you don't get the money, what happens? If you don't get the grant money, what?
If you don't get the grant money, the chances are there'll be no larvicide.
Well, then, you know, then what's that? That's the, the name of the game. You either get it, you don't get it. They either get it or nobody gets it. You know, I mean, it's, the grant's either there. It's not. They're, they're just, they're just saying, I want A off the menu. I don't want A and B.
Right. And we're saying, it's both. It's not, I get to choose. What if Brandon said, well, we don't, we don't want larvicide. We just want adulticide. So now you're going to say, well, every town gets to pick and choose what they want to do? You, you don't tell a company, any major companies, how to run their business.
But as a citizen, I get to choose whether I want adulticide sprayed on my property.
That's right. And all you have to do is send us a letter.
Correct.
And you have no idea the complaints we get from people that, I have to send you a letter? I sent you a letter last year. You should know I didn't want it to spray. Well, you know what? You lived there last year. I don't know that you lived there this year. And that's the least you could do. And that's a big problem.
Well, it seems to me Salisbury sent you a letter saying, we don't want adulticide sprayed.
No, they did not. They, that was not the question.
Well, the question, it's not, you're making it sound like they didn't understand they had a 25% match. So they understand that now.
Can I respectfully say that public discussion is, is welcome and public information is helpful. But the forum for what's happening right now is probably better done at the BLSG board. I think this is, we've gotten some information. And, and I don't think we can make a decision or even offer a ticket.
We're not looking for.
And you're not asking for one. But maybe this, this would be better brought to the.
We're just trying to give you an idea of what's going on.
Thank you. Yeah. Did you have?
No, I was just going to say more about the grant, but maybe I'll go to the BLSG meeting and do it.
And when is the BLSG meeting again?
Thursday, actually.
It's Thursday?
Seven o'clock.
In person, by Zoom?
Yes. Oh, yes, a vote. It's going to be both.
And when they meet in person, they meet at the, uh?
Usually it's Stephen Douglas House, but even that has been controversy because of COVID originally. Then we met at the Lester Meeting House a couple times. My feeling is, we voted to meet at the Stephen Douglas House, and it's never been changed. It's only been changed because of COVID. So I feel that the meeting will be Thursday at Stephen Douglas. But at what time tonight? I have not got the agenda.
Seven o'clock.
So.
And they'll, they'll post that in compliance with open meeting law in advance of the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Here.
The location and the time. But we know it's Thursday in the evening. Very good. Thank you very much.
Good.
I have item six, the appointment of a zoning administrator for a three-year term, July 15th, 2021 to July 14th, 2024. What's the pleasure of the board?
It's the same one we currently have, just the way you know. It's a good idea.
I make a motion that we appoint Jeff Beasoud, I'm assuming, as our zoning administrator for another three years?
And then second, is there any discussion? Is he, I guess this is a logical time. It's at some point recently, we talked about whether or not he had the right to issue tickets. And I heard that that was working its way through. And has that worked through to where he now can write tickets?
I don't think we're there yet. And Jeff, we haven't, Jeff's not at the point where he can write his only violation ticket shed, is he?
Jeff has had, he's had an Oscar number for a number of, period of time that he already told me. He didn't need to go through the judiciary because it's recognized by all the towns that he works for.
Well, there you go. He's ready to go then.
Okay, good. Because I, I think that's just good to know.
He's, you know, he's again, like, he's been trying to do the approach of, you know, work with folks to clean things up versus go ahead and strong arm them. And it's, it's actually worked on some places, you know, there's some where it hasn't been so successful so. But I think all in all, you know, the giving folks the chance to come into compliance has worked out pretty well.
Oh, I would agree. And, and yet I think that this is similarly a great intermediate tool before we get to the courts because we clearly don't want to. And so a ticket is another nudge.
Yeah.
So great. Good to know that. Thank you.
Public comment? Sure.
Public comment. My question would be kind of following Tim's that I would assume if we were renewing his contract for three more years, which I do think is a good idea, that whether there's been a job performance review done and how satisfactory the board feels that his work has been and if there's areas for, for improvement, such as ticket writing or, or following up on parcels of land that are not compliant. I feel that's been a major weakness from when he started three years ago. And having been part of the original interview, how he said he would time allocate. So to me, reviews or contract time or when is the best time to clarify any expectations we have. So I, I feel that that would be important. I don't know if he reports to the town manager or to the board specifically, but.
Yeah, at this point, the board did adopt a policy that the appointees, that we appoint who are compensated for their jobs would be supervised by the town manager in a direct way. And this was one of those jobs. And I think the health officer and animal control made them one of them. So I guess I can see if Mr. Effron has anything he wants to say regarding that in a public way.
Well, it's like one of any of those other jobs, when you have to tell folks they're not compliant, usually the phone starts to blow up because, you know, they say someone's not doing their job because, okay, they got an inch over for this and that. So with that, you know, with that said, I, I can't remember if I did an evaluation for him last week. I'll have to look. I don't see any problems with him right now. It's been a, it's been a good run. You know, there's been a lot going on. We're looking at doing some, some changes within the blue-o, and I think he's got a lot to bring to the table on that. So I've been, I've been happy. We, Bill and I have worked with him on many things. It seems like it's been a good result. And, you know, there's always going to be those folks that aren't in compliance, no matter what you do. I mean, even going to court, that's the thing. How much do we want to spend to fight someone because of too many junk cars in the area? We, you know, we went through this with the property before I was town manager. But we ended up actually buying at a tax sale and selling it and it was cleaned up. So, you know, there were some other ways we got around some of those things, but I, I think he's doing a good job.
How often do we get updates, reports? Was it twice? You originally asked for that.
It's a surprise to me. For sure.
Jeff's a quarterly reporter. He's the only quarterly reporter.
Because, because I, I do think, I, I, I think he's, he's doing a fine job. I'm not complaining about Jeff. But I think that having a quarterly report might be helpful to get a sense of that kind of riding sense of, you know, how many are in compliance, how many aren't in compliance, you know, what he's kind of doing.
Just did one for you guys.
I think he might, no, no, I think he might. So perhaps just a reminder that if he.
He did one since April. So in April, he copied the board on some violation letters he sent out. And since then was a report he gave to us. Might have been, might have been fully in June, isn't it? I don't remember what period he made that report.
I'm just encouraging us to get regular, you know, timely, as we call it, timely reports.
I think you've been pretty good with that, the new guy, so.
Yeah, I don't get the sense that they're methodically regular. They're just more sporadically regular. And, and I think that it might be helpful to actually have them show up at certain times of the year so that four times we can kind of count on them. Kind of like we get Sue's, you know, money things at regular times.
Yeah, I'd just like to chime in that I've probably talked to a handful of people who have sold it. They're very happy with the way that he's assisted them, filling permits and, so. I personally think he's doing a good job.
Other than that?
Well, I, I've made no secret about how I feel about it. And I've written letters to you all that I think there is room for improvement. And I definitely feel there needs to be a job performance review if this is the case, if it's a three-year appointment, so.
So the, the general routine would be an annual performance review with the other. You do the, you do all the town employees basically in the same month or so, right?
Yeah, usually it's right at that end of the year.
Do you have a fiscal year or the calendar?
right before Christmas time.
Anything else to be said? Ready to vote? All in favor of reappointing Jeff Beasusi as zoning administrator through July 14th, 2024? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? It's unanimous. Okay, so item seven, we'll do the two warrants, and then we'll need to have a liquor commissioners meeting and then a sewer commissioners meeting, and then, uh, come back for the executive session about the police union contract negotiations. So, is there a motion? Uh, or does anybody wanna take the warrants together or separately? What's the pleasure of the board?
We're gonna vote, take them both together.
Okay. Motion and a second to take the two warrants together. Any questions? Uh, sorry, there was a motion from Tracy and a second from Mike. No? Any questions on any of the bills on the two warrants? And the reason we have two warrants is that one is the prior year, uh, and the year is just closed, and one is the current year, it's just begun.
Mr. Chair, just like a second, just bring one thing out. There is a, there's a line on here for Casella Construction for $5,800 and change. That was actually repairs they did to the curb that was paid for by the, um, by FedEx as insurance company. So that was an in and out for us, and that was 100% covered by insurance, fair insurance. So.
Thanks for the update, as we often know, we always see the outgoing and don't always see the incoming current offset. Any other questions? All in favor of approval of the two warrants as they were presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any extensions? The ayes have it. Okay, so, at 7:52, the select boards at recess.